That's a repairing setback. We looked it up before.
That just came to you. Kathy just made that, right? Okay, one other thing. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
We got a bill from the Monique County District Board of Health about pumpkin the porta potty in the woods. And Bob Zelikid got several prices and the best is 180 bucks. Remember, we had this. I got it on 15th of October. So, I guess we gotta do that according to this information.
Well, you remember that? Yeah. You remember though, last year, there was no expenditures for the forest board. This year, we made the same thing as last year, a zero. So, we'll have to move money at the next thing in a meeting. And then we'll pay it after that.
Okay. Do you want this? You want this?
Yes.
Move money from the forest board or with the general fund?
No. The forest, my forest is actually within the general fund.
They have like maybe the forest board have operating realty. No?
No. That's the forest foundation.
You're talking about the private foundation.
Joe, don't we do this every year?
No, we haven't done it.
We're getting about a thousand dollars a year, but you guys didn't build it in this year.
Yeah. We haven't done it since 2006.
Really?
Oh, six. That's what you're paying for.
It hasn't been done.
Hasn't been done.
Do you have money in land and buildings? Maybe we could squeeze it out of land and buildings.
So, no audio. What else?
Well, it is specific enough with the district. It can only be repaired in a setback. What I would provide is the records of the date that it was passed. Anyone else discuss?
Can I?
The minutes? I don't understand what the dates were. Minutes, minutes, not audio. I would just give him like our normal record of proceedings that we have for those meetings.
Okay.
Anything that was public. There should be by 9:03 before it was adopted.
There's an ordinance, which is number 130307. It was adopted on 3/20 of '07. So, I give him that also, the ordinance?
Yeah. Click together whatever you think it relates to. Then we'll look at it first. Call me, I'll come in.
Okay.
And then I'll decide what to give him.
Okay.
Okay, I gave everybody a copy of this. Your bill from the Green Team.
Yep.
Why we're not getting our $4,000. I have something to do about it.
Congratulations to our newly elected officials in that tight race. Yes, they always.
I'm fucked up.
I'm fucked up. Your old winners.
Oh, and another thing. We got a couple minutes here. We'd like to get a new board member, James Brammer, B-R-A-M-E-R, on the forest board. He's the forester for the Mill Creek Park.
Yeah.
You know him?
I knew him.
Yeah. And can we do that?
Yeah.
I don't know if we, there's only so many people allowed, I guess, on that thing. But this guy would be an asset.
I mean, you can change that easily.
Can we do that?
Oh, absolutely. There's probably an ordinance somewhere that specifies. So, if you're gonna change it, you'll have to cancel the ordinance.
Okay. If we can do that, that'd be great. Because, okay, how do we handle it? Find out, like for next time? Get the ordinance and find out what the deal is or change your.
Well, he said you may have vacancies there or not know it. There may be 20 spots and only five people.
Say you bought it?
Yes. It's specified.
Okay.
With the makeup of this.
Okay.
I'm sure there's firms and probably.
Yes. Okay.
Great. 7:30. I stand for pleasure reasons. Pleasure reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the members. See.
Mark Cassatt, here. William Dunbar, here. Robert Limer, here. Joseph Mason, here. Linda Serna, here. Christine Ash, here. Yeah. Might make a motion to excuse Jeff Wrabel and Dave responding.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Okay. Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting.
Motion to weigh in, reading and accept.
Two sets I thought I saw.
Two sets. The regular and the accept one.
Okay.
That is. That would be for the insurance meeting. October 14th.
October 14th.
You have to do it one at a time.
Yeah. So, October 14th is regularly meeting, correct?
Right.
Second on October 14th?
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?
Second on the 21st? I can't make a mark on that. I wish.
Motion to accept the minutes of the special session on October 21st? You said second. Okay, so we did that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second.
All right. Notifications of meetings and events to the public and news media. Bloopers.
Before the next council meeting at 6:00.
Finances.
We don't have our meeting scheduled just yet.
Okay.
I think that we do need to look at that next group of numbers as soon as Nick releases the next group. Be sure that we have everything we need to end the year and get an early start after the first of the year to start looking at our budget and changes that we know will come.
We'll also have to do the thing to, you know, temporary.
How did?
For next year.
Okay.
And we just.
Normally, I used to do that by doing 25% of the total budget. Does council have a preference on how that should be done this year?
As long as it looks good.
So.
I think that's the way that I called last year.
Okay. Legislation? Please?
Oh, we have a meeting this evening.
Streets?
Before the next council meeting at 6:00.
ARB? First Thursday, it'll be tomorrow at 7 o'clock. Planning?
It'll be on Wednesday, the 20th, at 7 o'clock. And there'll also be a historic preservation meeting next day, the 21st, at 7 o'clock. Okay?
Border Zone Appeals?
Yeah.
West Reserve, 5th District?
We'll have our monthly meeting on Wednesday, November 13th, at 7:30 PM at the Poland Township Building.
Forest Board?
We have nothing scheduled.
And Hearn Memorial.
Monday, November 18th. Right, Kathy?
Right.
That's 3:30. Did you get Wittenhauer's? Are we gonna meet at Wittenhauer's?
Yes.
Okay, at Wittenhauer's.
Guess we're cranking it out. I don't need any staff.
Well, after this next one, I do. It'll allow.
All right. A report from the mayor. Couple things. Tomorrow, there is an excellent pairing of wine and art to benefit the Monument Project at Peterson Park. It's November 7th, from 5 to 8 PM at Wittenhauer's. It's $30 per person. There's gonna be a local artist, Tom Antoni, Shaka, we have our artists there. Sample of wine and beer presented by Vintage Estates. Unique vodka fusions by Chef Tad Sambida and all in the beautifully renovated Wittenhauer Gallery. $30, you get a creative glass, refreshment entry into the wine and spirit basket and a door prize drawing. So, that's tomorrow, 5 to 8, at Wittenhauer's. We had talked, I believe, last meeting about the Chamber is gonna be more involved in the capital funding, the local government match. So, I did get an application from Paula Ford, from the Chamber. And actually, this Friday is deadline. So, I'm gonna pass this around. If anyone can think of any projects that might pop up real quick, we can turn that in. And then I asked, this came from, what's his name? Senator Joe Chivoni's office. I asked him if he could maybe come in and talk to us. And as of now, he's scheduled to come on December 17th, but I have a note in my box to call his office. So, I don't know if he has to reschedule or not. But he's gonna come in on the 17th of December if possible. So, take a look at this and see if anyone jumps out. We're gonna put it in there. And then I got an email also for Paula from Celtic Club Flates Breast Cancer, a Poland Bridge display request. And I guess, thank for taking the time to speak about the breast cancer awareness event. The Celtic Club has a bras across the Crooked River event. And they had eight displays of donated bras from the past year, and they wanna hang them from a bridge one day in Poland. So, that's quite interesting. So, I don't know if anyone thinks about that, but they need to get back to him as far as that's concerned. So, there are three. We have the pickets. One day, three suitable bridges would be 224, 170, and the Cemetery Bridge.
Maybe the Cemetery Bridge.
They receive letters. They receive a lot of letters from John Boehner, Sherrod Brown, Rob Portman, Kasich, Marine O'Connor. So, I guess it's not crazy.
Where has it been around here?
Display began in Kent in 2010, fourth year. There was a 300-foot display in the lobby of the Akron Civic Center. 405-foot display on the fire escapes of the Akron Civic Theater. National Leader Conference of Ladies Fraternity in Kent, Cleveland. An 800-foot display on the Cleaver Metrobucks Bridge over Granger Road. 250-foot display on the Coyoga River Bridge in Kent. 790-foot display in a viaduct over Route 21 and Touch Forest River. 715-foot display at a Portage Trail Bridge over the Coyoga River. A 700-foot split at a viaduct over the towpath near Kenau and Barbitum.
When did this take place?
Started in Kent in 2010.
No, but when did they want to do that?
Whatever. Just one day.
Okay.
There was something else. So, they put off the, uh, the displays are for one day only. They go up early in the morning or take it down by rainfall. So, think about that. Let me know and I'll get back to. That's all I have.
A question. Ross, remember a while back, you were gonna talk about the electrical.
Yeah, I did.
Getting feedback from the board, whether they were okay with us doing electrical here and then feeding power over their property.
We talked to him. I talked to Jim Brady. And I also talked to the superintendent. And as of this point, I've not gotten any back yet from, but it's spout out exactly what we wanted. I'll follow up with that again. I know Maggie was here today with Ross. There would be Christmas stuff available for that. And he had mentioned a couple things that need to be fixed.
We really don't wanna go ahead with anything on that contraption over there until we get the okay from the board.
Sure.
So, it's getting a little more.
Yeah. And I said, by basis of, you know, we want you to acknowledge that you know it's on your property. You know it was done. And anything in the future will be done without license unless you contract with inspections, permits, and you will be notified if anything takes place.
Those we elected, Ross.
Yeah.
Hit it again.
I will.
Motion to accept my report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Report from the fiscal officer.
Okay. First thing I'm circulating around, the list of bills to be paid. It needs reassurance. Good news. We got an estate tax settlement on October 30th in the amount of $37,319. Phone the county. Phone the county to see if they were able to give us any information. If this is it, and they're not able to give us any information, they said there may be things out there still. So, as long as it's there, we'll just send it on out. Number three, I just got this in again for this meeting, since we are now adding on $710 to the 2013 paving. That brings the total to $102,529. And the last item attached is an ordinance that meant our appropriation ordinance. It's basically moving money from one line item to another within the state highway fund. And this is basically being used for, you know, electrical or, you know, traffic lights. $1,000.
Don't pay that seven penny until you get a chance to look at that.
Okay, I'll hold on now.
We never agreed with.
Okay.
So, is the electric just running short on state highways for traffic lights?
Yes.
Are we running short on other, so the nine items mentioned for electric?
Not yet. Not as of this, this batch bill. When I do the numbers for the next meeting, I will have a better idea for the end of October.
End of week.
Just a question on, sure, $40 to Paul and Presbyterian Church expenditure.
That is for the thing now, the Hearn Fund. We share the thing back there.
Garbage dumpster.
They do 40, we do 40. And it's just a thing that we send them out every month.
Motion to accept the fiscal officer's report. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?
Deputy clerk's not here, is unadministered. There is also one here. Dave called me. He told me that violations are proceeding very well. He had a guy that was working on an addition somewhere over in the north side. And he had not had a permit. And Dave knew that, and he sort of monitoring drove by. And there were almost people in Poland getting ready to work, and he threw him off the job. And the guy came around later that day and got a permit. So, he's doing a good job with that stuff. Things across the street are proceeding quite well. And talking about the mayor, just gonna deal with you and Russ. I don't wanna hang on with as far as.
I talked to Dave about that. He said that since he had, he has Mr. Eisenstein's case well on hand. He went down to court and everything. Now, he's gonna focus more on the mayor. He thought it'd be a harder case than the Eisenstein case was. I told him, I talked to Don Leone about the law and about what facts we have to support it. In fact, I was wondering where it stood tonight. So, I don't know other than, other than a conversation with him. But I know that would be his focus now, is trying to get that done.
Soon as I have.
Now, did he get the building for the, did he renew it?
Should we do that?
No, we. We don't. We don't. No, we don't. No. No. We don't.
He gave us a check, we need to cash it and sit in the locker.
I can say it worked out. And all that means.
Did he say it worked out?
Yeah. I don't know what happened with it.
Have we thought that through, not giving him a building permit?
My feeling on it is this. And I said it at the last meeting, I think. He has the money that he gave the village for the permit, which is like $2,000. And we've not cashed that check. It's my feeling that he's in violation of our ordinance. I forget the section in front of me about abatements of a nuisance. He does not need a permit to clean up the nuisance. So, he can do the work that we want done without us granting him a permit. What I would suggest.
Does he know what the nuisance is? That needs to clean it up.
Well, I don't know that yet. I don't know Dave, and he hasn't had to talk about it. I don't think he's been charged yet, so I don't think it's gotten that far. But my suggestion would be that a proposal is, you take the money for the permit and you clean it up. And you make the outside of it look nice, so the neighbors aren't bothered by it anymore. And once you do that to council and the neighbors' satisfaction, then approach us again about getting a permit, or we might grant it. So, I think you hold, hold it out against him, the fact that he's got the permit. He's gonna say that I found a permit, I can't, can't do anything. And I disagree. I'll give him a thing that says you can abate the nuisance. You can comply with the statute. You don't need a permit to do that. If he gets it to the point that the back, the part of the property is built back in, the cellar is covered up, and it looks presentable, then he can approach the village by a permit to do the rest of the work.
But, you know, going on his property and doing things on his property, he is really gonna have some claims against us if he do things that he feels inappropriate.
If we do?
Yeah. If we go in there and you say, you know, clean up the property.
No, he will. He'll say, you take your money.
Them do.
You take your money.
What you think he's gonna do.
Yeah. He has to. He has to comply with the statute. What I'm saying is, you say, I wanna give you back $2,000 for the permit. You take that money, which obviously you have, and hire people to clean up what you have messed, what you've done.
Anthony, I told you before, I don't agree with this because that's an open question. Clean up what? You know, there's top paper hanging on the side. There's all kind of junk around there. No, that's not gonna solve the situation. I think you're wrong. You wanted to fill in the hole.
I think we can make him do whatever he wants.
Yeah.
I think you give him a list of things, and he say.
I tried that before.
I know. But two things happened before. One is he had a permit, and he didn't really have any need to do anything. Two is he was not charged with anything. He's going to be charged with something. Three is we have $2,000 that is that we know he has, that we can use and say, we've got this check. Take it and go do something with it. Here's what we want you to do. We want you to do the, fill it in, we want you to do. You give him a list.
Yeah, we declared a list. And we're gonna charge him for violating statutes based on that nuisance. So, we have to identify what the nuisance is. That will tell him what he needs to do.
You can get specific and be like a bill protectors of color. The statute itself doesn't require you to list exactly what it is that you want him to do. You can do that above and beyond. I would recommend that you do that, so that he can comply with it. And if he does, then I would say, we can dismiss the complaint. So, he has all the incentive that he'll ever have to do something right now from us. We'll never have as much power over him that we do right now.
Okay, we gotta have a timeframe.
I agree. I talked to Dave, and I told him of council's desire to move this quickly. And he understood that. And he said that, and this is about two weeks ago, that he just got in court with Mr. Eisenstein. He had that in hand. He said it worked out well or something of that effect. Now, he will focus on the mayor. And he knew we wanted it done.
I mean, Brian Eisen might just cancel my check also.
He could. He might.
He might.
What will it do, Sam?
Two months, maybe.
Yeah, probably nine days, I'm guessing.
Three months, it'll be still bailed anyway.
Yeah. So, what I'll do, I thought I'd see Dave's name, but I'll call him again tomorrow and ask him what the status is. And I'll call him again, you know.
I gave you the name of the people in the, in the county.
I called them.
Who said, don't give them a permit.
Yeah, I called them.
Yeah.
And they said basically that they were, I don't wanna say snickered, but they understood or implied that they were frustrated with the situation as we were, that they went down and looked, see if there's anything that they could cycle with, and there was nothing that they found that they could do. I did check through that John Perk out again. I could get it. Get Dave's name.
One thing, when you talk to Dave, like, this is myself, like, I hope you agree, but I think Dave should give us a report on what the results of the Eisenstein. He said that it's okay.
He said.
But we, we need a report.
Oh, sure. No worries.
He didn't tell me, so maybe it's not over yet. But he just felt he had a strong case with pictures and everything.
Okay, so he's nothing settled?
No.
Okay.
All right. So, now a report from solicitor.
Wait, whose report was that?
That was really offbeat, not talking to Dave about zoning, so I guess we could prove it if you want.
I can't accept the zone. You both agree to do that.
I will check it out.
Okay. I talked to Attorney Leone, and he emailed me tonight the report concerning the trees. Specifically, the Yule property, the, it's called Main Street Investment, which is the property next to Yules, and the Griselda property, which has been taken care of. They were kind of not done on their own. There are two parts to his report. The first part is where he researched the plats and determined where the property line fell for the, for the owners. As platted dedicated law, Mr. and Mrs. Yule would own to their property line and not to the center of Riverside. So, they don't own to the middle and then go backwards with the easement. They own to their property line, as does Main Street Investments. Actually, Ms. Griselda did own to the center line of Riverside. As to the question of, the village is ready to trim trees that interfere with the railway. Revise Code 5535, advise public highways into three classes, state roads, which we talked about, county roads and township roads. It authorizes the county engineer to remove any trees or vegetation located in or upon the railway of county roads, as the engineer determines to be necessary to facilitate the railway to the public to improvement and maintenance of uninterrupted travel. That section confers the same authority to the township boards and trustees and also to us. With regard to the legal question about whether the abutting landowners can be charged for the removal of vegetation, et cetera, that would seem to me to be a taxing power of the village, as long as it meets the powers in the village charter, and would affect such abutting owners. And would affect all such abutting owners. So, I think that we have the power, according to Attorney Leone, to charge them for cutting down those trees, is what I'm getting. I'll call him tomorrow. He was working on this at 3 o'clock today. And he emailed to me after 5 o'clock, so I didn't talk to him afterwards. But I'll talk to him tomorrow, and I will send a letter out to the homeowners stating our intent to collect the monies that were spent for the cutting down trees. That was on that.
Why didn't you just send an invoice?
I will do that. I'll cash the invoice to the letter.
Yeah, good. Okay.
I'll need that.
I have those. So, I'll leave me in the inbox.
I received a letter after I spoke to Attorney Bruno. Attorney Bruno called me, Lynn Bruno. He said, I understand that you were talking about her clients, Mr. and Mrs. Angeloli. She wanted me to know that they are the folks against whom Mrs. Bay was making the complaints concerning the light nuisances. She sent me the civil protection order, as well as the civil protection order request that Ms. Bay attempted to get and was denied by the courts. I looked them both over. The civil protection order that was issued by Mr. Angeloli was garnered in Magistrate Welsh's courtroom, Mrs. Judge Kirshbaum's magistrate. He's pretty conservative, so for him to grant a restraining order, it doesn't just do them have hospital orders. And Ms. Bay was ordered to stay not 500 feet away, as is normally required, but 200 feet as is normally required, but 200 feet away. No closer than 200 feet away from their property in order to have any contact with them. This was issued on June 13th. Respondent shall not photograph or video petitioner and protect persons under any order. So that was issued by the court against Mrs. Bay.
Against?
Against Mrs. Bay. She said there's another side to this, that she wanted counsel to know in light of Mrs. Bay's...
Angelini's, weren't you?
The allegation was that the respondent, Mrs. Bay, continually at all hours of the night and day, photographs, films, follows the noise and harasses the entire family, observes them with binoculars, blocks their ability to leave their driveway, stalks all members of the family by hiding in wooded areas, both in their front and backyards and across from their property, and ran Mary Beth Angelili off the road, and continues to make unwarranted statements to local authorities and city council, uh, village council, all which are unwarranted. So that's what Magistrate Welsh looked at and heard testimony from in making his decision. I also have sent by Attorney Bruno a complaint filed against Mrs. Bay from the Angelilis that alleges trespass, unintentional, I'm sorry, intentional, infliction of emotional distress, negligent infliction of emotional distress, preliminary injunction, and then restrained order. So I told her I'd present this to council because Mrs. Bay presented her side and I thought, in any future matters, that council looks at this issue, it should know both sides of the story. She said she'd be willing to come here and address council. It may be my suggestion is to let the courts handle this, not us. There's more to this than I realized. And, you know, I think anytime you look to make legislation, it's a good thing. But I would not do it necessarily in the midst of litigation concerning that issue. So that's, I'll give anyone a copy of the wishes of this.
I'd like a copy of it, yeah.
Bob, you understand all this stuff?
Yes, I do. You understand Dr. Bay is a 55-year-old. She's been here. She's a very peaceful woman and this is, you know, just, it's unfortunate. They used to have breakfast together. And it's just an unfortunate neighborhood situation. Totally, you know.
I hope it resolves.
Now, Mrs. Bay has gotten Manchester Bennett to defend herself.
Yeah, she spent, I tell them, money already.
But it's...
I hope that they work it out, Harvey Neves or somebody like he is. I don't like litigation like this. But I would let the courts handle all these things and then talk about the ordinances it might not talk about.
It just, it goes back just quickly to they were putting in a drain from their backyards in the front and they got onto a Cowan-based property without, she says, harbor authorization. And it went downhill from there and they... So that's, it started out as a neighborly thing to drain their backyards and turned into this mess.
Yeah. And the lights, there's nothing we can do about the lights now. Or we should, or the cameras...
It's up to council, I mean, I'm not gonna tell you what to do by ordinances, but I would just say that to make an ordinance, while there's litigation going on concerning, it's not that the courts are aware of. It's not that the court isn't looking at all the sides of this thing. Now, I'm sure Mrs. Bay has presented her side, will, maybe even counter to, you know, to interject an ordinance in the middle that might not be the best thing, but I'm not gonna tell you not to do anything. And the only other thing was I had a question presented to me about the... The, what do they call it? That Mr. Eisenstein put up. The pavilion. Too long today. And the question was, you know, where does it stand, let you, with what council wishes to do? And I said, well, you know, I know council was willing to look at the issue as far as having that pavilion there. It does violate the repairing setback and that's why I think Mr. Eisenstein is asking for this stuff. It violates it, but that doesn't mean that he couldn't have asked for a variance and we told him that. And I said, if he just would have done what we asked him to do and played by the rules, he would have had his answers. And he chose not to. He chose to make it hard on everybody. That doesn't mean that it's still not a good idea, it just means that now we have to backtrack. And I'm confused as to why he would ask for this stuff because I was under the impression he wanted to try to work this out by going back through the channels and asking us for the variance as if it was not there rather than tearing it down and then having to go through it. And if council thought it was a good thing for the community to be there and it granted a variance, then he would have paid his amount for the variance fee. He would have paid his pardon court and that's something we could have moved on to. I don't, I don't know that I had prepared, you know, as your council, to suggest that in light of this request. You know, for someone that wants to be appeasing and wants to try to work something out to tell us that he wants all the records of the amendments and everything else...
I think I can provide more insight on that. I think it's, part of his defense is going to be that the patio and the stairway were both allowed without us pursuing any prosecution over those items. Now, they're prosecuting for the pavilion.
Those were done before the setback.
Yeah, that's what he's looking for, the time, the timing for. And that was a, that was a direct comment.
He called me.
That was a direct comment to me and everybody.
Well, he called me and threatened that he's gonna put my name on the staircase that anybody would call me and why that staircase is there.
Me too.
You too.
Yeah.
And he was quite obnoxious on the phone.
This is amazing because as a Poland resident, I've never been in the pavilion, but I think it's a nice thing. He's making it hard for us to do what may be the right thing for the village by act of this. And it makes me not want to negotiate or try to work through these things when he does this. And I told, I told this individual that. So I just wanted to put to council that I was approached, that I said I would talk about it at the meeting. I don't...
You should quote him and say, this is another example of why the village government must be reorganized.
Yeah.
He's starting a new government.
So, so I don't know. I think, you know, let's give him what he wants and he'll have to do that by statute. And let's just sit back for a little bit and let council think about it. You know, it's almost like, you know, do you, do you, if the rule brings in a gold chest, do you get rid of the gold chest as you brought it in? I mean, you wanna look at what was brought.
He has just thrown, you know, cornflakes at us. And I'm really disturbed that even if he had him, that it'd be anything but to just take it down. I wouldn't give this guy any suggestion that we're gonna cave on this issue. I'm certainly not gonna cave on it.
He was advised about the proper procedures to go through...
He just threw it at me.
To possibly get what he wants.
Several times.
You were in a meeting with him and his lawyer and Dave. He called me personally and I advised him what the zoning laws and the way he should go through to get a variance and get a building permit. So I advised him personally how to do that, what the process was. So you, me, everybody else, he came to council here and stood in front of us and we advised him again. It was a third.
It's a bad example of somebody doing some process on statutes. And then getting away with it. I mean, it's a bad example.
I simply wanted to report what I was approached about and I said I would present it. And I kinda feel like you all are...
I'm gonna be talking about a project here that came to the planning commission last week. This group, if they came in here, they're going through the proper channels to get this, to try to get this, this project done, get a building permit, zone changes, possibly variances and so forth, so forth, you know. And if all of a sudden they just said, eh, we don't wanna bother, we're just gonna start building it. That's exactly what Mr. Eisenstein did. You cannot, you cannot do that. Building permits are required of every, every political entity that exists. And to go ahead and build without it being advised, you can't. Just flying in the face of the law.
Well, he just dissed us as a council unless he just said he's... It's his law and he's gonna do it. I think we have to take an extremely tough stance against this guy.
Does the state have any objections about that or the urban engineering? Yeah, I talked to the state, this is back in the summer, and they were so hot on the phone. I said, you know, what happened and you go, did what? We're coming down there tomorrow. And they were gonna come and they were gonna have them tear down what they told me. And they never followed through. Nothing ever happened. And I think that kind of fed his, do whatever.
Order.
And then we, you know, we followed through and they're charging them. So I just disappointed some, but I'll relate council's feelings and my own too, actually.
Motion to accept the solicitor's report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
A report from Chief of Police and a street commissioner.
Paul wasn't here, party yesterday, today, so unfortunately I have to read it to you. I'll make it quick. Police pickup, as of Monday, we were 15 loans ahead of last year. There have been no problems as of yet. All salt has been delivered and available equipment is ready to go. We met with Bob Magni today. Reference to electric issues, he assures us that everything will be taken care of while in advance of the Christmas activities. Police department, we've received a reimbursement check for DEA officer in the amount of $3,087. I applied for additional reimbursement as of 11/5/13 in the amount of $2,520. And I have attached, I have DEA seizure paperwork that I discussed in police committee and I'm hoping our cruiser will be on the road, hopefully by the end of the week.
Not beginning next week.
That's it. Make sure Magni doesn't do anything with the electrical over here that feeds for Salisbury Poland and, because we still have to wait for an agreement with the Board of Education.
Oh, we don't have that yet.
We don't have that yet. Yeah, I asked the mayor about that a little bit earlier.
Okay, yeah, they just haven't done it.
Okay, so you can't, can't do anything about that until we get that approved.
Okay.
Motion to accept the street and police report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
A report from engineer. I got nothing except to find out what this brings for. Right here. I got it right here.
All right, reports relating committees of council, financing, wage, audit and insurance.
You have a copy of the minutes from the special meeting that we held with National Health Care and we have some agreements there that we have to discuss in executive session, I believe. Anthony, I wasn't really sure on this. If you think that it's not meant for that executive session, however, for personal matters, employment? Possibly appointment? But if we get in there and you think that it's not material for and it's a violation of sunshine laws, then we just come back after.
Motion through, planning report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Legislation policy, nothing. Police and fire?
Nothing.
Streets, sidewalks and drainage?
Nothing.
And looper?
Nothing.
Or some boards, planning commission?
Yeah, last meeting, as I said earlier, a foreign company came in to discuss a possible building of a apartment complex. And that would be at the corner of Riverside and 224. It would require a change in zoning from residential one to residential two. And there are various aspects of the construction that could also require variances. This is a very preliminary situation right now. It's gonna be, we'll be in at the planning commission's next meeting.
How many units are involved?
It's a pro unit luxury condo and standard multi-handled apartment program.
Are they looking for a variance for density again?
Um, no.
Is that the property that we just had, they just have a tree down?
Yep. What type of, on the court?
Yeah. This is very preliminary right now. They're just, they're missing a field for their fishing. Also, we discussed the possibility of developing landlord registry to help David responding out to know what's being rented out there and also possibly a foreclosed property bond set up so when any buildings become foreclosed, the bank would have to provide bonds so that there would be monies available for repairs and so forth. So we're looking at those things. Any reports?
I have a question. That's legislation, right? Is there been, is this in planning, has there been any talk about writing laws regulating turbine power, wind turbine power in our town? Or street again?
Yeah.
What would that have to do with?
I'm not sure if that would be the zoning or if that would be...
Somebody can come in and put a big fan on the driveway or something like that.
Yeah, that probably would be zoning.
Who's on zoning?
I'm on it.
All right. What's that?
About you and that?
No, I was just, you know, talking with people, but it's gonna be a very viable source. That solar panels, too.
Yeah, they're pretty cool.
What's that?
Solar panels are pretty quiet, though.
Yeah, but if we spread it out to the front yard, it may not be...
Yeah, that's a good point, Bill. I'll bring it up to the next planning commission meeting.
I have a question I'm planning to, Bill. So this was the first advertised meeting for this project that was presented?
This was the first.
Was it the first advertised meeting for this project? I know that there were gonna be two advertised meetings for the presentation.
What would be the next planning commission meeting, they're gonna be there, which is the 20th?
20th?
And...
And then there will be a vote at that time?
No.
Planning won't...
I don't think we planned, I don't think we planned on a vote then. I think it's gonna be...
Well, we were gonna deny the variances from...
Yeah, I really wouldn't do any of the details because...
Versus variances?
Yeah, we're gonna push them to variance rather than a change.
Okay.
What is that zoning right there?
It's, right now it's on rez one. They want it to be rez two. And the planning commission's not inclined to do that, so it'll require a variance.
And would it be an adjacent to the ledges?
It's also gonna have an exit right across from the school, right where the buses run.
But Mike, the chairman, is doing a lot of investigating right now, so I really can't answer a whole lot of questions right now till we get more information.
Motion to approve planning.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Board of zoning appeals?
Nothing.
Forest board?
Nothing.
Prime Memorial?
Okay, I got a request from Larry Lepant for the Poland Junior Women's Club to put a sign on the village screen announcing the Poland lighting in the village to be held December 7th. Okay, Laurie? Okay. And also, I talked to Michael Simon, you know who we're talking about. Laurie, I'll call, I mean, Kathy. I'll call him and tell him of the meeting change, right? Have you talked to him?
I have not.
Okay, I, okay, I'll, because he wants to help, so we'll get him there, okay?
Yes.
And maybe he brought Maraski with him, we'll see. Okay, and John McCarthy, he didn't show up, he, okay, so that's all I have.
Has council been advised about what's going on with the green? With the behind fund? And the high fund is funded in the budget to get decorations and new decorations for the tree and also check in the roof. Should be, should be very nice. Kathy worked at, went in purchasing and it should be real nice.
Good job.
Okay, and you're working with Ross, he's gonna trim that tree up and get a boot truck and all that stuff from the strutters.
We are, we are ready, have to discuss that at the upcoming meetings.
Okay, yeah.
As far as the logistics.
Sure.
We have to unpack all of it and see what connectors we need and extension cords.
Light it the same night?
I'd love to.
What did you say?
We should light them all at the same time.
Oh, sure.
But we need to know, we're, I mean, we're right now putting together our... But we need to know, I mean, we're right now putting together our announcement, and right now, all we're saying is Peterson Park and here, we're not saying anything about up there.
Of the village green.
We might as well do it all at the same time.
Well, there might be a timing issue here. So let's, let's kind of hold off on that.
To get this one done?
We are hoping to have everything up by December seventh, but with Russ's situation with leaves and so forth, we do have remaining issue that has to be resolved.
Maybe in...
We'll let you know after Monday's meeting.
Yeah, can you hold off on the announcement a little bit?
Yeah, we're just working on it now. It goes out to the schools the week before Thanksgiving.
Okay, Laurie.
After these Monday's meetings, we should have a better feel for what's going on.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Motion to accept the Hine Fund meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And West Reserve Fire District?
Nothing.
Okay, reports from special committees? Communications from residents? Any new business? Any old business? Motions, ordinances, resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings to pass by emergency and ordinance to amend ordinance fourteen twenty-nine thirteen.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Cassatt?
Yes.
William Donovan?
Yes.
Robert Wimmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sernick?
Yes.
Christine Yash?
Yes. An ordinance amending ordinance number fourteen twenty-nine dash thirteen, permanent appropriations and to declare an emergency.
Second. Rule call.
Mark Cassatt?
Yes.
William Donovan?
Yes.
Robert Wimmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sernick?
Yes.
Christine Yash?
Yes.
Okay, any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
Do you have any just for the subty tank in the woods?
No, that'll be after the next meeting, after we fund that line.
Yes, second and third readings. Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion that the bills be paid.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Questions from the news media? Did we decide on this subty club thing, what should I talk about, the bras over the bridges? I don't care.
Not appropriate at this time of year.
About the capital bill, and then just jump out, then we can do it until that Friday.
What does that mean? Are they talking about legislation that we're asking for, or are they talking about...
Well, for those who previously submitted capital bill proposal, mind your all applications are due by closing business Friday, November eighth.
Like legislation that we would like our state...
Like if, if you have a project ranking, how they're going to do it this way through the chambers is how they're doing it now, so...
Oh, like capital projects?
Acquisition of land, building, construction, professional services, the percentage of funds to manage.
Wow, they didn't give us much time.
That's what they usually do.
How about the acquisition of the Misha property on Two Twenty Four, you know, near where they tried to put the low-income housing? That's a beautiful piece of land on Two Twenty Four.
You can watch for that.
If I have your own numbers together, and you have to write it, eleven...
On November fourteenth, Thursday, of the presentation. Okay, the first national dying tower downtown.
That might be something for, you know, that, just make it part of the fortune, like we did with the properties over at...
Parkland.
Turned the more grass to cut for us, your department.
No, 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 just be cut the forest.
So you would cut that?
You would cut it.
I'll put this in my logs, but I don't remember things. Okay, we'll do a march for counsel. Mr. Cassett?
Congratulations to all the newly elected officials.
Mr. Duncan?
Duncan.
Mr. Major?
Duncan.
Chris?
Congratulations, you four. Welcome back.
Mr. Linnell?
None.
Mr.?
Nothing. Are we going to do our executive session now?
Might as well.
Motion for executive session to discuss personnel...
Second. And suspend the orders in debate.
Employment.
Rule call.
Sorry. Mark Cassatt?
Yes.
William Donovan?
Yes.
Robert Wimmer?
Yes.
Joseph Mazer?
Yes.
Linda Sernick?
Yes.
Christine Yash?
Yes.